Well. Okay.
Jenna, should we take a photo?
No, just chairing.
Good evening, everybody. We're gonna start in about two minutes, so if you could take your seats, please. Thanks.
Okay, we'd like to get started, if we could, please. Welcome to our first evening of local bill hearings. Just like to lay out a couple of minor little ground rules that we have here. For individuals, the time limit is two minutes. For organizations, it's three minutes. No seating of time will be permitted. A yellow light in front of you will come on when you have thirty seconds in which to finish your presentation, and a red light will come on, and a tone will sound when your time is up. And we've been informed that only one, we can only have one mic on at a time, so when you're finished speaking, be sure and release that red button, so that the sound will work for the million people who are listening on the TV tonight. There is, written testimony is not required, but we like to see it, because a lot of times you can't finish what you need to say in two minutes, so that way we can, we can go back and look at what was testified about. So if you have written testimony, that'd be great, or if you want to get it to us later, that is good also. Forty copies should be, well, should have been, delivered to the staff. And should you wish to leave the hearing before your name is called, which I don't think is going to happen tonight, because I don't think we have that many people, please let our staff know that you're, that you're leaving, so that we, we know what, what's going on with our list. Before you present, you start your presentation, if you could state your name clearly for the record, we'd appreciate that. Shane, you want to start with, Dahlia Robinson, start with the first one?
Sure, thank you. The first bill we're gonna do is MC 118. That's Delegate Lutke. And whoever else you'd like to bring up, let's see.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the delegation. Eric Lutke, District 14. MC 1-18 is a process bill, and this being Montgomery County, we all love process bills. The salaries of most public officials in the state are determined by special commissions that are created with the responsibility for investigating, you know, appropriate compensation for officials. One of the glaring exceptions to that is the Board of Education. In a couple other counties in the state, particularly in western Maryland, for a number of years now, the counties have been operating under a system where a commission is established to take a look at compensation for Board of Education members, and then that commission makes recommendations to be implemented. And essentially, that's what this bill does. It would require quadrannally, quadrannially, that the county council and executive would appoint a commission. That commission would review Board of Education compensation, make recommendations to the delegation, which of course then would have to introduce a bill since the, the compensation is outlined in state law. But it establishes a rational and regular process for changes to compensation, so that compensation does not just rely on one of us remembering every ten years or so that we haven't made any changes to the compensation for a while. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Durso from the Board of Education.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify tonight. I'm Mike Durso, President of the Montgomery County Board of Education, here in support of Bill MC 1-18. This bill would create a Montgomery County Board of Education Compensation Commission, who will make recommendations to the Montgomery County delegation on September 1st of 2019, and every four years, as to the appropriate compensation for members of the board. In formulating its recommendations, the commission is charged with considering the following: the scope of responsibilities a county board member, including volume and workload, the time required to perform those duties, and the salaries of similar county board members in other jurisdictions, and other relevant information. The board appreciates the recurrence of the commission every four years, ensuring a continual review of board member salaries, regardless of future changes to the board and/or the Montgomery County delegation. Additionally, the board supports the inclusion of Montgomery County residents into the discussion of salaries. In addition to the consideration of salaries in other jurisdictions, it is the board's hope that the number of board members, the total salary budget, and the number of students in a jurisdiction are considered by the commission as well. Our board has routinely had internal conversations about compensation. I would encourage you to review our enclosed document to our submitted testimony, as it includes data on where Montgomery County falls in terms of per pupil costs by salary, in addition to other interesting data. We want to thank Delegate Lutke introduction of this bill, and would urge a favorable report. And let me also take a moment on behalf of my colleagues on the Board of Education to thank the combined delegation for your support over the years. I suspect this will be a unique session also, as we have had in the past, so we look forward in working with you on this, and of course, numerous other issues. Thank you.
Any questions? No questions? Okay.
It's like my classroom, that's great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, okay. Okay, next on our agenda here is Montgomery County Uniformity of Property Tax Assessments, Country Clubs and Golf Courses, MC 11-18, requested by Delegates Moon Platt and Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, colleagues. Thank you for indulging this conversation on country club tax breaks. I think it's a very timely conversation, given the GOP tax plan that just got passed over this weekend, which I think stands to benefit those who are hardly the least privileged right now. And this bill, you know, it's, it's a, the more I delve into it, it's more complex than it seems at first blush, but I'll give you a little bit of context here. The state of Maryland basically forced onto localities that country clubs with private membership and dues and over fifty acres of land would be given a substantial property tax assessment discount that nobody else, save for maybe farmers and agricultural land in the state, gets. In 2002, there was a debate about this issue when legislation was introduced and passed, and it took what used to be a cap of $5,000 that basically, if you had a private country club in Maryland, that the land, no matter how much it was valued, would be assessed at $5,000 an acre. And in 2002, the General Assembly lowered that to 1,000. So essentially pentupled the, the assessment discount that private country clubs would get. In 2002, the State Department of Assessments and Taxation opposed this change. MACO, the Maryland Association of Counties, opposed this change, and the Maryland Municipal League opposed this change. And the common thread in their testimony opposing pentupling country club tax breaks in Maryland was that this was a mandate on counties and cities, that it was gonna drain millions of dollars of revenue from county and local budgets, and that it was arbitrary, and that essentially, we were artificially undervaluing land. And the impetus, from what I understand, in 2002, is that the assessors were coming to the conclusion that golf courses back then were severely underassessed, and they were basing this on the sales of courses, which were going for much more than what these courses were being taxed for. So someone got clever, this legislation came up, and they stopped the assessors' attempt to assess this land at a fairer market value. The interesting thing in the 2002 fiscal note to that bill that shows you why this is a real matter of tax unfairness in Maryland and in Montgomery County, is that the assessments for these country clubs that got these special discounts went up about 10% over a three-year period, whereas publicly available golf courses, meaning those that were not closed only to private members, had their assessments go up 40%. So under the state policy, if you have land that is being preserved for use as a golf club, and it's open to the public, that land assessment is, might go up 40%, but if you are private and cater to wealthy individuals who can pay dues and initiation fees and close the gates to that land only for those members, their assessments only went up 10%. Now, there's a fresh fiscal note, it's a preliminary fiscal note to this bill, and what it'll show you is that the impact on county government is a loss of $10 million of revenue. To the state, it's $1 million, and there's a local municipal impact to this too. And again, I would, I would point you to the fact that this, you know, leads to why MACO, MML, and ESTAT vehemently opposed making this change. So here we are today in the year 2017, and I'm proposing that we revisit this issue. It's been fifteen years. We are seeing red, a structural deficit for years to come. The federal government looks like they're not helping, but they're actually gonna make things worse, to the benefit of probably many of the same members of these very country clubs. You know, I, I think it's time to take a fresh look at this. So the bill before you simply repeals these tax breaks in the future. Most of these country club assessments are, these special deals with the state are written for five, 10, 50-year timeframes. The Columbia Country Club, I believe, somehow managed to get a 50-year tax break agreement written out of ESTAT. So this bill does not disturb any of these agreements. The contract was made, the state will abide by what it said it would do, but in the future, when these agreements expire, we will not renew them. That's what the bill says. And so if you look at the fiscal note, it says it's hard to see the savings materialize from this bill until 30 years out, maybe, in which case, we start seeing $10 million benefits. And that's because of how long these folks got a good deal written in for their country clubs. So another bit of information I'd throw at you is that the Republican federal budget that's been proposed preserves conservation easement tax breaks for these very same country clubs. The Obama administration tried to get rid of this. That cost $600 million a decade out of the federal budget. So there are layers and layers of benefits that these clubs are getting, again, for private members, that nobody else gets, certainly not clubs that are open to the public. And you're gonna hear some talk that, you know, some clubs can't afford any additional fees, that the industry is struggling. And, you know, while I didn't see us bail out Blockbuster, or Video Village, or Arrows, when Netflix came around, or start looking for ways to save Barnes &amp; Noble from going under in Bethesda, you know, we have this one isolated instance where we're doing that for private golf courses. So I would urge my colleagues to take a fresh look at this issue. Because we haven't had this conversation in 15 years, I am entirely open to amendments. This draft is a work in progress, you know, and I would suggest to you that because the state imposed a one-size-fits-all tax assessment structure for all of the golf course, country clubs in the state and in Montgomery County, we might want to look at capping out what a country club can get, or making this a needs-based tax break, that if a country club truly is struggling, and we can find some way of drawing that line, that we should do that. And I will show you, you know, revenue, and I can pass you more information on this, we'll go into work session and local subcommittee, but the revenues on some of these clubs are, you're talking about 17, 18, 20 million dollars. The tax burden that they're looking at is $100,000 extra for the wealthiest clubs, and maybe 10,000 extra for the smallest clubs. How do we know this? Because Burning Tree, one of the provisions in law to get this special tax break, you cannot discriminate. Burning Tree decided it wanted to keep discriminating against women, and said, forget it, we won't take this tax break, and they seem to have no problem shouldering the extra cost onto their members. And then you have Lakewood, I believe, had maybe a 15, $20,000 change when they are about to get a ESTAT tax break agreement put into place that they didn't have last year. And so the smaller clubs, because this is based on land value, will have a slight uptick in their charges, whereas a very wealthy club with $50,000 initiation fees would see a larger increase. But we're talking about something like maybe $100,000. We shall see. So I will leave it at that, and let other folks speak. Thank you.
Any questions, Eric? Delegate Lutke, I'm sorry, we've got a little confusion up here.
It's okay. My first name works, too. Thank you, Delegate Moon. Can I just, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, can I clarify a couple things? So in the fiscal note, there's a list of clubs that would be affected by the bill as currently drafted. And from your testimony, it seems like your intent is to focus on the private clubs and not the public courses. And there's at least two public courses in this list that are in my district, Cross Creek and Blue Mash. Your intent was to exclude public courses from the intent of this bill?
Yeah, in fact, I, it might not be ready today, but I have an amendment drafted to clarify that provision, that we are making a distinction between closed and open to the public.
Okay. And I also wonder, you know, I think part of the justification for this, when I wasn't in the legislature, but I assume part of the justification for this when it passed was concerns about open space. And there's another club here in my district that's in Latinsville, inside the ag reserve. And it seems to me like that might be a reasonable reason for the existence of the credit, if, if you're in an area that's zoned for agricultural pres, for land, open space preservation. Is that, have you thought about that issue?
Yeah, it's an entirely fair point. And again, that's why I say it's a work in progress. I would, if this were to move out of the delegation, I'd be surprised if it was, the baby was born as I intended, but that's okay. And so I'm happy to look at clarifications, creating tiers or caps. Basically, you know, any progress we can make on this issue, I think, would be well appreciated. Again, you know, we don't have very many revenue sources on the table, and if I had my druthers, you know, most of the giveaways that we do out of the tax fund would have a needs-based, or some other anchor to why we're doing it. And some of the clubs may have that point, some of them may not.
Thank you very much, Delegate, I appreciate it.
Delegate Barve, and then Delegate X.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So let me be clear. If I buy open land and decide to make a, build a golf course, and, you know, allow anybody to play on it for a fee, I would not get this tax break.
It is, the specific criteria are private course, dues-paying members, over 50 acres. Yeah, they're, they're specified in law. So there, so there's a real disadvantage to ironically, there's a real disadvantage to the far more accessible clubs than there are to ones that are, you know, truly private country clubs that cater to very wealthy folks.
Now, this tax rate, is this what a farmer would get?
I don't know what the agricultural, I don't know what the agricultural rate is, but it is similar, in effect.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Delegate Hickson.
Thank you very much. Thanks for putting the bill in, David. That was my bill that was put in the past, so certainly I'll be looking at it closely, that kind of thing. But the intent of that legislation, at the time, and the times have changed, and I'm sure that we could look at it and review it, and see where we could bring it in, is that we were dealing primarily with open space in Montgomery County, and protecting it to the best of our ability. And that was the intent behind the bill. If you're finding criticism with it now, but I think maybe we could sit down and talk and see what the tax ramifications are before we go forward, okay?
Yeah, it's perfectly fair, thank you. And no, no slight on your work, obviously. And I guess to that, to the point of conservation, I guess, one thing I would point out about the federal conservation easement program, and there's recent press about this because of the federal debate, the, quote, "The Obama administration wanted to cut the deduction because it viewed the policy's costs in total as far exceeding the conservation benefits." Getting rid of tax deductions for golf course owners may, may make sense, but that doesn't mean it will happen. And so the, the reality is, the feds were looking at this and weighing exactly this issue, the conservation benefits versus the cost to state, county, and local governments. And, you know, I think it's, again, it might depend on the club. We might have clubs that might in fact trigger development if they were to go under, and in fact are teetering on the brink. We can talk about that. But very clearly, there are clubs in Montgomery County for whom that does not apply, and this is a straight windfall. And again, it's because we did a one-size-fits-all tax break on this one, instead of looking at it as from a needs-based perspective.
Delegate Kramer.
And I think that's important to Delegate Hickson's point. I think an example is Norbeck Country Club, which I understand just sold maybe in the last few months, after, I believe, a very lengthy effort to find some entity interested in purchasing it. And I know I began getting contacts from folks in the community who were very concerned that if it was sold for development purposes, that they had real problems with that, and that they were, you know, hoping to keep, see it continue as open space. And I have no idea what the terms were, but I do believe it did, they, they did find a buyer that's keeping it, at least temporarily anyway, as a country club, if not permanently. But I know that was a real issue up in my community, that this might, you know, a very significant parcel of ground would suddenly become more houses, so.
Yeah, and, and let me be clear, it wouldn't be sudden. We'd still go through the normal development review process, and the county would still weigh in and look at staging and all of that, and extractions for, for development. But yeah, again, you know, we're happy to look at specific courses and see what makes sense as we move forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Okay. Then I'd like to call up, well, you're already up, so please go ahead. Ben Ross.
Okay, I'm Ben Ross, 4710 Bethesda Avenue, Bethesda, testifying as an individual in support of the bill. I think the principle here is very simple. If you own a backyard and have gym set, or sandbox, or whatever there, you pay taxes on the land. But if you are a member of an expensive country club, you don't pay taxes on the land to speak of. And so it, to me, it's simply a matter of fairness, and that's it. I just want to make one comment about the fiscal note, because I looked into this some years ago when these issues last came up. And I think the fiscal note may actually understate the amount of money at stake. If you look, most of, the, the money is all in the golf courses in Bethesda, Chevy Chase, and Potomac. And they are all zoned for single-family houses, two, four, or six or seven to an acre. And a knockdown in that area goes for upwards of half a million dollars. So if you consider that the land is worth half a million dollars, or 600,000 per house you're allowed to build, I think you get a number in the ballpark of 30 or 40 million for the county. And hopefully, the legislative analysts will be able to take a little bit closer look at that. The only other thing I'd say is that there's a simple way to deal with the problem of the golf courses in the outer part of the county that are less affluent, which is to simply say that instead of paying on the full value, you would pay on, say, $50,000 less than the value per acre. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Next on the list is Michael DeLonge from the Montgomery County Young Democrats. Okay, well then I'd like to call up a panel of three, PJ Hogan, Cheryl Powers, and Brian Pizmenti, please. PJ, you want to start?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chairman, Mr. Chairman, members of the delegation. For the record, my name is PJ Hogan. I represent Coalition of Golf Courses and Country Clubs entitled Maryland Clubs, Maryland Coalition of Concerned Clubs. I am, I do feel like this is deja vu over, all over again. In 2002, Delegate Hickson was the sponsor of this provision, put into statute, this specific categorization for property tax for golf courses and country clubs, and I was the Senate sponsor of the bill. And not to get into an argument with, with And not to get into an argument with the sponsor, but back then, it was a democratically-controlled legislature with a Democratic governor. So it was passed by a Democratic legislature and signed by Governor Glenn Denning. Nothing really has changed, well, legislature hasn't changed. This was a statewide statute, and it really was about open space. I heard a lot of talk about, you know, do we treat somebody differently than somebody else because they've got X. We don't do that for ag land preservation. We don't say, you're a wealthy farmer, you don't get ag land preservation money, you're a poor farmer, you can get it. We have a myriad of policies in this county, in this state, to preserve, to conserve land, to preserve open space. The law as it stands applies this tax rate to country clubs or privately-held clubs that are open to the public, such as Blue Mash in your district, Delegate Lukey. You know, the shocking, I didn't even know until I thought it, because I was, back in 2002, I was operating on a statewide basis. But in Montgomery County alone, we're talking about 3,000, over 3,300 acres of land. That is a lot of land that is being kept open, that is not developed. And this is not land that's out in undeveloped areas. This is some prime land in heavily densely populated, very congested areas. I couldn't imagine if, if all of a sudden, the land at Woodmont between 270, excuse me, between Rockville Pike and 270 was developed, the number of homes, townhomes. So my two minutes being expired, I respectfully ask that you give this bill an unfavorable report. I have with me Brian Pizamonte, who is the Chair of the Coalition, is the General Manager of Woodmont, and Cheryl Powers, who is the CFO, Chief Financial Officer of Lakewood, and the Treasurer of the Coalition. They're here for questions, if anybody has any specific questions or comments.
Delegate Barve?
Yeah, I'd like to expand upon the comment you made with respect to privately, private golf courses that are open to the public. You were asserting that if I went and bought open land and it met all the other qualifications that a country, private country club has, and I ran it as a business, are you asserting that that would, that that preferential tax rate is what I would get?
As a golf course?
Yes.
Yes, as long as you didn't discriminate. That's why Blue Mash gets this tax rate. It gets wrapped up or splashed about, oh, this is only about country clubs. This is country clubs and privately-held golf courses. The only golf courses in this county that, well, Delegate Moon pointed out, Burning Tree. That's a separate, they choose to discriminate and not allow women to be members, okay? Okay, so put them aside for a second. They're paying the highest and best used value as if that land was going to be developed. Everyone else, every other course is paying this rate. And then you have all the county courses that obviously pay no taxes. Now, let's not forget, these are businesses, and Delegate Barve, you know business better than anybody, these are operating businesses. They have lots of, you know how many employees are employed in the 14 clubs that we're talking, or the 16 clubs we're talking about? Over 3,400 employees. And I'll tell you, as we talked about this and surveyed it, these actually are, they pay higher wages than most in the hospitality industry and have a much longer working tenure than those in the hospitality industry. A lot of these courses and clubs give a lot back to the county, involved in all kinds of community benefits. And I'll say one last thing, if somebody doesn't think a course will close and go to development, I'm looking at Senator King, I'm looking at Delegate Robinson, and Delegate Barclay.
You can see my tears.
Montgomery Village Golf Course, privately-held company, privately-held course, used to be, you had to have a membership, then times got so tight, they opened it up to everyone, so it was publicly open. They enjoyed this rate, but even that couldn't sustain them. Now Monument Realty bought it, I mean, it's private land, they bought it and are looking to develop between 400 to 600 homes.
Well, as long as they have transit-oriented solutions for all those people. I have a question for Ms. Powers, and since you, you're, maybe, I heard the term controller associated with you. So if we were to pass this law and your tax rate were to go up, as a percentage of your expenses, what kind of an impact would that have on the country clubs that are, you know, roughly, that are in this coalition? I mean, is it, is it 2%? Is it 5%? Is it 10% of the expense, current expense load of these, you know, country clubs?
So we really looked at, when we did look at this at multiple country clubs, we looked at the market values of the, of the country clubs, and that being the tax rate that we would be paying. So a lot of clubs would actually be paying close to $400,000 more in just property tax from what they're currently paying.
Okay, but what would that be as, I mean, you know, if my personal electric rate went up by 50%, that would be still a very small percentage of what I spend as a person. So what would, what would this increase in tax mean as a percentage of your expenses?
As a percentage of the total expenses? Or as a percentage of just the property taxes?
Yeah, because what I'd like, no, no, as a percentage of expenses, maybe you're not able to answer that now, maybe you can get back to me. But, you know, in making a public policy assessment, I think it's important to know what the numbers are in relation, I mean, if something doubles, that sounds terrible, but if, but if something that's really minuscule doubles, then maybe it's not terrible. That's what I'm trying to get a feel for.
So I guess it would really depend upon each individual country club, but I can tell you, for Lakewood Country Club, it'd be a 5% to 10% expense increase just in property taxes. And that's just aside from everything else that we're facing, which City of Rockville increased their water bill for us by almost 300%, creating their fourth tier, and also the-
Well, they do have a highly, a really terrific water program.
They do. And then the minimum wage, of course, as well, is also going up, and health insurance rates.
Okay, thank you.
Delegate Lukey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Senator, let me pose a bit of a hypothetical question to you, because here's what I don't understand about this. If the intent was to preserve open space, why is it specific to the use? Because there are other uses that I can think of that preserve significant amounts of land that are not country clubs and that don't qualify for agricultural tax rates. For example, and only in my district, we have a number of retirement communities like Friends House that have large, very large grounds that are essentially open spaces, but they don't get this preferential rate. So why should country clubs get a rate that other institutions preserving open space don't get?
Well, I mean, these are very large swaths of land, swaths of land. We're talking 380, from, say, 150 acres to 460 acres, just by themselves. I mean, that, a golf course makes up a large plot of land. I mean, I can't, why don't others that, I have no problem with that. I mean, if, the goal is to protect open spaces. I said, we have lots of programs in this county, in this state, to protect open space. And doesn't mean the program should stop at one, could be more.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make one final point on the, I think it's important to note that this rate only applies to the acreage for the golf course. The physical structures, the clubhouse, any other facilities, tennis courts, all that, those are all taxed at the full rate. This is only to the acreage that is used for the golf course.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify, the other two, if you want to testify as well, or, okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that ends the bill hearing, so.
On that bill.
On that bill. So we're gonna, we're gonna move to economic development bills right now, so I'm gonna turn it over to the Chair of that delegation subcommittee, Delegate Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and you are up first. We're gonna go a little bit out of order, we're gonna hear MC 1818 first, Delegate Robinson, and we'll call up also Stacy Spann and Camille Fesh.
For the record, I'm Delegate Shane Robinson, here to present MC 1818. So basically, historically, public housing has remained exempt from state and local taxes. But housing authorities have modernized the way they serve their constituents, and in many cases, affordable housing has become subject to taxation. So this bill tries to address that specific issue by creating an entity called the Montgomery County Housing Authority, which would be entirely controlled by the HOC, but it would extend their tax-exempt status to them so that they could maintain, maintain the tax exemption for, for affordable housing. And I'd like to add that the county executive has written testimony in favor of the bill with amendments. The county council is waiting to see the amendment before, before they come on, decide whether or not they're gonna come on board. We're working with them on that right now. And this is something that came out of Baltimore City, so they're already doing it, and our Housing Opportunities Commission thought that it was something that would work well on our county as well. With that, I'd like to, like to turn it over to the Executive Director of the HOC, Stacy Spann.
Good evening, members of the Montgomery County delegation. My name is Stacy Spann, and I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Opportunities Commission of Montgomery County. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to participate in this evening's local bill hearing. As you heard from Delegate Robinson, and thank you, Montgomery, MC 1818 would update the law to reflect the way that affordable housing financing happens in today's time. Given the changes in affordable housing development and finance, HOC has actually seen an increase in state and county taxes. In 2017, HOC paid a little over $1.8 million in state recidation and transfer taxes, and another almost $600,000 in Montgomery County transfer taxes for six public housing and other properties that converted under HUD's Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. In fact, the county transfer taxes were leveraged simply because HOC created and transferred assets to development corporations, LLCs, LLP, and LLPs, even though the properties continue to serve the same residents and have the same public purpose. Public housing as a federal program with a long history is exempted from state taxes, and local municipalities often charge a payment in lieu of taxes, sometimes as low as nothing, which has been the case in Montgomery County. But in recent years, HOC and many other housing authorities across the nation have been transitioning out of public housing and creating more public-private partnerships and using programs like the Rental Assistance Demonstration, as well as low-income housing tax credits to finance themselves. These new entities are sometimes not as clearly understood when they're created, requiring an education process if HOC is to get tax treatment comparable to the public housing paradigm. Current laws exempt properties used for essential public and governmental purposes from all taxes and special assessments of the state or public, I'm sorry, a political subdivision if the property belongs to the housing authority. This bill more clearly defines Montgomery County, a Montgomery County Housing Authority entity establishes HOC's ownership interest in that entity and clarifies that the entity should be treated like the housing authority, HOC, for tax purposes. The legislation maintains the ability of the county to assess payment in lieu of taxes where appropriate, and by treating HOC subsidiary entities the same as the housing authority itself, the amount saved in taxes and fees allows the agency to invest more into creating and maintaining affordable housing, deepening the level of affordability and serving the residents of Montgomery County. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Delegate Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. Mr. Spann, I had a question, maybe not directly related to this particular bill, but I understand based on this bill, that HOC is over the property of Toby Town, and I understand in March, you will be leaving that property, is that true?
It's actually not exactly accurate, so we have a federal requirement that is a community of 26 units, separate units. 19 of those are homeowner-owned, and the other seven, we had a requirement, a federal requirement to transfer the ownership to persons who were living there or were on a list to purchase. And so today, we actually closed on the seventh of those. Leaving there is a bit of a misnomer, because again, it's a homeowner-owned community. And so to the extent that those homeowners continue to own their property, then yes, we're still there, because at present, we're the holder of the common area, that is to transfer like any other homeowner community into an HOA or a similar structure.
Okay, if I could just follow up, one other question on that. When there are renters there, I understand, I received an email recently, that a renter was offered a dollar to buy the property, but only three days to make that determination. Is that a typical procedure that HOC goes through?
Well, that's actually factually incorrect. We've been working with that community for well over, and I think you're aware of this because you were there with me last year, well over a year to talk about the transition and settlement of those properties. Arriving at the purchase price of a dollar, I don't think that's an actual unreasonable requirement for folks to make a decision. And in fact, in that particular instance, the individual was well aware of the offering price. And I might add that persons who purchased those seven units were also met with a check at the closing table. So I'm not exactly sure about the nature of the complaint, because I certainly received none. And again, the seven homeowners seemed quite happy as they, as they left our office.
Okay, I will follow up with this later with you, because according to the email that I received, the individual seemed a little distressed that didn't have enough time to make this decision, and whatever the contract that was being presented to her. But I'll take it offline, thank you.
Certainly, you're welcome. And just, just to clarify, that actually has nothing to do with 1818. This bill is about tax treatment for the entire entity, and in fact, housing persons who continue to be renters, who, most of whom are low-income, certainly we have a good number of seniors, persons with disabilities, and the like, income-challenged persons in this community. And so when we're converting to a structure that modernizes those properties, it often winds up in a development corporation, an LLC, or something of that nature, and therefore is less recognizable than the traditional public housing platform.
Thank you, Mr. Spann. We have a question from Delegate Wilkins.
Thank you, and thank you for presenting this bill. I think this was really helpful information. My question is, with the current challenge that we have in terms of more people in need, of course, than we have affordable housing available, is there, with this tax treatment change, is there a way that you see sort of a direct or indirect link to expanding or like alleviating that, that crisis? If you can talk about that a little bit more, that'd be helpful.
Thank you, Delegate. This is one of those, one of those areas that's really difficult. Unfortunately, over the, you know, over the last five years, our agency has been working extremely hard to expand the definition of services, and in addition to that, expand the number of units that we have available to house folks. And we're working hard to keep people housed. So our pipeline has led us to somewhere around 1,500 or so units created, which is phenomenal pace. And essentially, every opportunity we have to control cost, it equates to, directly to a person housed, served, or both. And, you know, these are not simply single parent, or single-person households, we have parents with children, seniors, and the like. And so there's a direct correlation between managing our overall expense structure and serving persons of low, extreme-low, and even moderate income. So direct correlation, thank you.
Any more questions on this bill? I just had one really quickly, I think you kind of got to it after Delegate Wilkins' questions, but can you just give me two sentences on why you need this particular bill, 1818?
Certainly. It really is because we're attempting to create more opportunities and- Certainly. It really is because we're attempting to create more opportunities and maintain the affordability of the existing opportunities. And as the expenses continue to rise, well, it makes it that much more difficult. And given what's happening at the federal government with the destabilization of the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and some of the financing opportunities, quite frankly, that's in jeopardy. So a destabilized public housing platform really does jeopardize the ability of us to take care of persons who have the most need in our community.
Thank you very much. And I think I see no more questions. So that concludes the hearing on MC 1818. Thank you very much. And we will move on to MC 1318, which is Delegate Kramer. Brought to us by Delegate Kramer, Senator Mano, Delegates Cullison and Morales.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the delegation. Ben Kramer here on behalf of the Fightin' 19th District. And we have a bill that will be familiar to the delegation because you passed it unanimously last year. And on that basis, I won't take up a whole lot of your time. I will, as I did last year, give credit to Delegate Resnick for having been the one to, in a previous bill, establish much of the language that was utilized in this bill. And it would simply give an opportunity for the good seniors of Montgomery County to be able to play bingo for a very small pot of money and not risk being in a position of making little rocks out of big rocks at the state pen. So once again, the goal is, let's move this bill. Hopefully, the obstruction in the Senate will find a way to work through. Chair Kaiser, I know, tried very hard last year to break the impasse, and unfortunately, at the very end of session, in fact, I think within the waning hours of the session, the bill got lost. So we'll be back again this year and hopefully complete the path. And with that, I have Ken Muir, one of my good friends from Leisure World, and he'd like to offer his sentiment on the bill.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Ken Muir. I'm the Chair of the Government Affairs Advisory Committee at Leisure World. And the problem is that many older people like to play bingo. And our activity committees in some of our condominiums sponsor that without knowing that they're breaking the law, because you have to be a 501(c)(3) organization to sponsor bingo. So we're in the position of sponsoring something that's illegal, and we don't want to do that. And so hopefully, you will enable us to get on the right side of the law, enable our grandparents, and your grandparents, and parents to be able to play bingo in any over-55 community in Montgomery County. Thank you very much.
I will do my level best to help you this year.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Muir or Delegate Kramer? All right. Thank you very much. Sorry, it looks like Senator Kagan does have a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question. It looks like it's, uh, ba-ba-ba-ba-ba, common area residential property. There are bingo games at the Rockville Senior Center. So are those legal currently, or are those illegal currently, and this bill maybe should be expanded to include those folks? Or do you know?
Are they playing for...
I think they play, Delegate Barve, do you know? I feel like they play for cash and prizes.
I seem to remember cleaning them out for a thousand.
But not more than $1,000, so you don't want to lose those votes, I assure you.
We have bingo in Leisure World, but it is sponsored by the Leisure World Kiwanis Club, which is a 501(c)(3). But the problem is that you have to go from your own condominium up to the Leisure World Clubhouse to play. Some people don't drive. The transportation doesn't work. So I don't know about other ones, but this would be just over-55 community.
Well, I would get to play now, so that's all good.
No.
But this specifically references a residential property, and the Gaithersburg and Rockville Senior Centers are not residential, but I suspect we may have others. Delegate Kramer, maybe we can just chat about this and see if that's something we should look into.
Yeah, be happy to chat about it, with the caveat that we were already struggling with what we had last session, but always happy to have a conversation.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions? Wonderful. Thank you so much. With that, that concludes the hearing on MC 1318. However, Delegate Kramer, feel free to stay for MC 1418, Housing Opportunities Commission, binding arbitration for wages. And we also have Amy Miller and Paulette Key Dudley coming up.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the delegation. Ben Kramer introducing MC 1418. And let me just start out by saying, with passage of this legislation, we are not pioneering new frontiers here. This legislation would simply provide that when there is a bargaining impasse between the bargaining unit and the HOC, that the arbitrator simply be able to consider wages in the decisions that the arbitrator is looking at. This would be consistent with what currently exists in the law for Montgomery County government and the bargaining unit, for park and planning and the bargaining unit, and from what I understand, if I learned correctly today, with the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission and the bargaining unit. So what we have here with HOC is an outlier, and it quite frankly puts the bargaining unit at a significant disadvantage when the arbitrator cannot take wages into consideration at an impasse. And it also begs the question, why wouldn't we be giving the arbitrator this opportunity? The problem then becomes that HOC is in a position to say, this is it, take it and walk away. And I have to say, I'm a little disappointed that evidently, the county council has taken a position in opposition to this legislation, because it doesn't guarantee outcomes. It simply says, the arbitrator may take it under consideration. It doesn't say that it's going to find in favor of the bargaining unit, but it will simply be taken under consideration. And by the way, this does not bind the county council. This is between the bargaining unit and HOC. So I would ask that we create parity. If there is some concern about, within HOC, that this might create an additional financial burden on them, I would proffer to you that it's not appropriate that that financial burden be borne on the backs of the employees of HOC. You know, we need to recognize the value of the employees in our government, and simply give them the opportunity to go before the arbitrator and make the case when it comes to wages. So with that, I would ask for a favorable report, and I'd be happy to turn it over to those here. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Millar, and I'm testifying on behalf of UFCW Local 1994. Our union is in full support of MC 1418. It's a bill that would include wages and binding arbitration provisions at the Housing Opportunities Commission. Current law already provides for binding arbitration in areas of negotiations except for wages. Under collective bargaining law, the parties have the duty to negotiate over wages, hours, benefits, and other conditions of employment. But perhaps the most fundamental component of collective bargaining is a duty to bargain over wages. To specifically exclude wages from established impasse procedures does a disservice to the collective bargaining process. Bargaining should be conducted on an equal playing field. HOC employees do not have the legal right to strike, so absent comprehensive binding arbitration requirements, employees have little leverage to reach a fair deal, and there is no vehicle for impasse resolution over wages. Collective bargaining law with binding arbitration, as you heard earlier, that includes wages, is not new. It's not unusual. Similar binding arbitration provisions exist from Montgomery County, Prince George's County, the District of Columbia, the Maryland National Capital Park and Plannings Commission, the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission. The discrepancy in the law for HOC employees has led to real consequences. The economic analysis that we do in preparation for negotiations shows that HOC employees are paid less to do the same work and serve the same communities than their counterparts in these other agencies. So it's a matter of equity. Binding arbitration has been a valuable tool in solving impasses on many occasions, and most of our other representative units have this tool in place for wages. The prospect of an impasse hearing before a neutral mediator/arbitrator provides motivation for both parties to offer compromises and to move swiftly to ensure that their position will hold up under scrutiny and that the position is the most reasonable. Binding arbitration doesn't discourage the union or the employer from reaching a negotiated agreement, but actually provides the conditions under which a fair and timely negotiated agreement is more likely. This law would require an arbitrator to look at HOC's ability to finance any economic adjustments required under the proposed agreement as part of its ruling, and the agreement's impact on current levels of public service. So it wouldn't hinder the commission's mission. The arbitrator would also need to consider the public interest in making a final decision. So it's in the best interest of the union, the employer, and the public for the parties to have a method to fairly and promptly resolve impasses at the bargaining table, and this bill would just do that. We urge you to vote, find a favorable vote for this bill.
Thank you, Ms. Key Dudley.
Good evening. My name is Paulette Key Dudley, and I'm a vice president with the UFCW Local 1994, and I'm also a founding member of the HOC Union. HOC has been represented by UFCW Local 1994 MGO since 1999. I was one of the four staff members who reached out to Local 1994 as problems related to mostly wages were becoming a major obstacle for the HOC workforce. In the early years, we were given meager increases and bonuses. Bargaining at HOC has never been easy. I've sat on every single bargaining committee at HOC since the union was formed. Once the workers at HOC won the right to collective bargaining, it gave us power to negotiate with management on many things, and thankfully, that included wages. Over the years, our bargaining has gotten more difficult and demanding. Local 1994 and the bargaining teams have always tried to get parity with the county and other like agencies on pay scale, benefits, and working conditions in our negotiations. This has become a task in recent years, but the work of our dedicated employees never stops, and we've seen dramatic increases in the overall needs of the community we serve. We have struggled with negotiating our wages and benefits because of rising healthcare costs and economic uncertainty. We've had years when the commission would claim that it cannot afford to raise our wages or make our workload easier, and we face strong pushback from the commission when trying to get what we believe was a reasonable contract. It really can be exhausting. At any point, HOC has made their own rules and guidelines, but they still must resolve issues with us at the table. Bill 1418, which would incorporate wages to our current binding arbitration law, could make the process more equitable and reasonable. Arbitration is a useful method to resolve impasse, and when wages are not part of the package, it leads to imbalance by adding wages to this law. I think that this bill will be good for the commission, good for the union, and good for the public we serve. I urge you to support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question from Delegate Kaiser.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question's for you, Delegate Kramer. In doing your research for this bill and understanding the background to it and all the other governmental units that have this, what explanation was given to you why HOC was not included at that time? Do you have any idea?
I absolutely do not. Good question, but no. I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
And Delegate Cullison.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for that question, Delegate Kaiser. So the question I have is, I am looking at the opposition, and I'm not seeing anybody coming up to the table with opposition. Is that...
Written only.
Written only. So I'm looking at the written testimony. All I'm seeing is an explanation of what binding arbitration is. I see absolutely no rationale for opposition. Do you know something I don't know?
Well, and that's why I expressed my disappointment, because again, this is not binding on the county council, so I'm not even sure why they are weighing in on the bill in the first place, and the county executive has not taken a position on it. So quite frankly, no. Now, I don't know if there's, HOC is coming up behind me on this to speak, and okay, so there's, wow. Then I say, let's vote it right now?
I'm with you, Delegate Kramer.
And get it done.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Wonderful. With that, that concludes the hearing on MC 1418, and I'm going to pass it over to Senator King.
I just have to take a point of personal privilege here tonight. Our very own Melanie Winger has a birthday today, and can you imagine a better place to spend your birthday than here? Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Mel. We're going to now move on to MC 1918, Montgomery County ranked choice voting, brought to us by Senator Kagan and Delegate Lutke. And I believe I'm going to go ahead and call up Grace Ramsey with Fair Vote, Chris Hughes, and Nancy Bliss.
Good evening, colleagues. Cheryl Kagan, very proud to be the senator for Gaithersburg and Rockville, and sitting here regretting that I didn't bring my reading glasses when I came down here. I'm going to, yeah, right. Thank you. If only I had 18-point type in my notes. All right. Let's see how we do here. Ranked choice voting is also known as instant runoff voting. It happens in jurisdictions around the country and in our own Tacoma Park. This is a local bill that would allow and authorize Montgomery County Council to take action, to have ranked choice voting. Some people find this confusing, and yet we intuitively do it every day. We're at Thanksgiving dinner, and we want apple pie, but the apple pie is out. So we're left choosing between the blueberry pie and the pecan pie, and we make our next choice. We do that all the time. And in the same way, as we are looking at a crazy at-large county council race next June, with some candidates in the room here, we believe, Delegate Lutke and I, and my partners here, believe that we really need to offer the option of better reflecting voters' choices. So rather than voting for just up to four at-large county council candidates, let's say there end up being 25 or 30 candidates. The candidate that would be your fifth choice, that you really like, but you only get four votes, would get just as much love from you as the candidate who would be the least likely preference for your vote. Ranked choice voting allows you to really express your preference. There were just elections in Minneapolis-St. Paul where they've been doing it, and again, Tacoma Park has been doing it for years. We have experts here who will be able to answer technical questions, but I just want to make sure that it's clear, we need no new voting system. It can be done currently with the equipment that we already have. There is precedent, and if you look in your packets, if you can find them through the other information... other information, my staff generously made a chart with some of the other jurisdictions that are already doing this. And in addition to the local jurisdictions, it indicates that Australia, New Zealand, Ireland, and others are already doing it. You'll see Cambridge, Mass., San Francisco, Berkeley, California, as I said, the Twin Cities, Portland, Maine, and the state of Maine is incorporating that as well. I'd like to pass this over to Delegate Lutke with just one more thing that I wanted to talk about. I'm wearing my favorite campaign button today, and it says, "Vote, or you have nobody to blame but yourself." I think Montgomery County voters ought to be able to not just vote, but really have their voices heard and make sure that their preferences can best be reflected in the outcome. The findings have also demonstrated that candidates are nicer to each other and nicer to voters, and that there is also a different ability to target. Let's say, let's say I'm a candidate for the county council from Kensington or from Montgomery Village, and let's say there are a whole boatload of candidates from Tacoma Park or Silver Spring, which never happens, right? They might just write off Silver Spring or Tacoma Park today because they say, yeah, they're going to vote for the hometown team. But with this bill, with ranked choice voting, they'd say, you know what? Maybe I can be their second choice, third choice, fourth choice, fifth choice, but still get some support there, and they would have an incentive to go down and testify and knock doors and reach out to voters they might otherwise not seek support from. That also goes for candidates. If there's a candidate that is your opponent and you see him or her as such, then there's a, you know, he, one of us is going to win, one of us is going to lose, let's say, versus, you know what? Love this guy. Let me be your second choice. Let me be, let me be your next choice. Just keep me in mind as a backup. There is studies that show that the races are 30% less negative, fewer attacks, candidates are nicer to each other, voters feel like the issues are a higher priority with less character assassination. There are a bunch of handouts in your, handouts in your packets today. And with that, my colleague Delegate Lutke. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add a couple additional comments. First of all, it's important to emphasize it's authorizing legislation. It does not require. The county would have to make an affirmative decision after public input to implement a system, and they would develop some of the details of how that system would work. I know some of you are very familiar with instant runoff voting, some of you are less familiar. The basic way it works is pretty straightforward. Instead of voting for one candidate in a multi-candidate race where there's only one seat, you rank the candidates, right? And if no candidate reaches the 50% threshold, then what happens is they take all of the first votes that went to the last-place candidate, take those people's second-place votes and redistribute them. And they keep doing that until one candidate hits 50%. So let me give you an example that's currently in the news. Roy Moore is running for Senate in Alabama, as is Doug Jones, and it's, there's been a lot of national attention on the race. There's also an independent candidate in that race. You may have a majority of Alabama voters who don't want to vote for Roy Moore, but some of those voters who don't want to vote for Roy Moore also don't want to vote for Doug Jones necessarily. They prefer this independent candidate. That independent candidate will probably get less than 5% of the vote, and those votes are essentially wasted. Those voters who otherwise might have selected Doug Jones as a second choice, their, their voice sort of disappears from the process completely. And you get a candidate who might win, as happens often in our electoral system, with simply a plurality of votes despite a majority of the electorate preferring another candidate. So, you know, in my mind, this is simply a better way of voting, and I think the places that have been implementing it have demonstrated that. And I would encourage a favorable report, and of course, Senator Kagan and I are both always available to discuss this further since there are some complexities here.
I think we have some questions from some legislators for the sponsors before we get to the panel. Delegate Kaiser, did you want to ask your question?
Can I just say something before we get started? I just want to remind everybody that this is just the bill hearing tonight, that there will be a work session with the delegation subcommittee to iron out a lot of the details and stuff, so this is really just a bill hearing tonight.
This bill's perfect as is, Senator.
Well, being yours, I know that it is.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My questions for the sponsors. Definitely appreciate this bill, and I certainly understand the, and so it's less of a concern, but just wondering if down the line, you know, with the council race that we could have in this next year with 35 candidates and if we had ranked choice voting, the time it would take to vote, the voter education that's involved in advance, which could have a cost, and the time it would take to vote would certainly increase the lines. So is that something that you all have talked about, considered, and what the county should do in that case?
I can start off if you want, and then, so first off, thank you for the question, Delegate Kaiser. If there are indeed 35 candidates, and I really commend those who have the courage and the fortitude to run in that kind of race, voters would not be required to vote for 35? They can vote for up to four currently. They can continue going on, and then they kind of stop at seven or eight because they haven't heard of anyone else, they aren't familiar. They can stop wherever they want. So, but yes, there is a question about that, and I think that would enable, as Delegate Lutke said, this is an authorizing bill. The county council, along with the Board of Elections, would have to figure out implementation and details, which would especially be helpful for early voting and vote by mail, where people could take a little more time, and we have more, more stations.
Delegate, we can also see if any of the advocacy partners we've been working with have data on whether there's been an impact on wait times in jurisdictions that have implemented.
We have questions from, I believe, Delegate Moon. Did, maybe not Delegate, none from Moon. Delegate Barbe and then Resnick.
For the sponsors, there is a variant of ranked choice voting that doesn't get discussed very often. It's, in my opinion, superior and a lot simpler called approval voting. Have you heard of it or considered it?
I'm not familiar with it, but would happy, be happy to learn.
I can describe it in one sentence. Rather than ranking candidates in order of one through seven, you, let's say there are 35 candidates up for election, four will win. This is a system that would simply allow the voter to choose as many candidates as they approve of. So if they approve of eight of them, eight of those candidates would get a vote from that voter, and then at the end of the day, the winners would be the top four vote-getters. And what this tends to do, if it, it's, it's not used very often, but there is actually an organization that's been formed to promote this kind of voting. What it does tend to do is it does tend to kind of cause centrist candidates in a particular jurisdiction, whatever the political center is for that jurisdiction, to tend to prevail because that's where the vote preferences tend to overlap. Would you be averse to giving the county council the option to consider that as well?
I'd like to learn more about it. It sounds simpler in some ways, rather than struggling, is this candidate number five or number six and all that? The only challenge is that number one, using your example, number one and number eight, there's no distinction. And maybe number one, I'm really for, and by the time I get down to six, seven, and eight, I'm not against them.
It's sort of like that in the House of Delegates races, though, because we're the top three vote-getters have equal votes, but there may be some who are more intensely liked than others.
Agreed.
But they still get only one vote.
And thank you for referencing that, actually. Ranked choice voting or instant voting reduces the amount of bullet voting because people feel like their voter preference is reflected, because they can sort of say yay and then okay and then less okay, but I still like them and.
Well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to send to you and the other members of the delegation, there's, there's actually a YouTube video that explains what this is, and I think it's like two minutes.
Perfect. Great. Look forward to learning.
Fits perfectly with the attention span of legislators. That's great.
Thank you, Delegate Barbe. We're going to move on to Delegate Resnick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very quickly, I get how it works when there is a single winner. I'm having a harder time conceptualizing how it works when, when there's an at-large race, like Serra County Council race that has four at-large members. Could you explain a little bit more to me? I'm being a little dense tonight.
Sure. No, so you keep, in that case, you would keep redistributing until four candidates were over the 50% threshold?
So if you have, so you have to have all four candidates go over 50%?
Each one at a time. So Susie makes it, she's done, and you redistribute and you figure out, and then, okay, Joe moves ahead to the finish line. You would just keep going until you end up with four winners who have, who have gotten the requisite number of votes.
Would it then be mathematically possible for more than four to be over 50%?
I think if, if, if a redistribution happened that pushed a fifth candidate up over 50%, which would mathematically be possible, it would still be the top four finishers who would be the ones who would win the race.
I could potentially see a challenge from somebody who may have gotten there had you kept going. You see what I'm saying?
Let's keep, let's keep some of the more detailed questions for the work session.
I'm just trying to figure it out.
I know. It's complicated.
Fair Vote might be able to help answer more technical questions and at a work session.
Do we need to hear from Delegate Barbe? Okay, let's hear from the panel, and then we'll see if legislators have more questions. And keep in mind, we will have a work session on this in Annapolis. Would you like to start?
Hi, good evening. I'm Nancy Bliss, president of the League of Women Voters of Montgomery County, and I'm going to read the letter that we have in support for the legislation that Senator Kagan and Representative Delegate Lutke have proposed. And we are urging the other members of the Montgomery County delegation to work for its adoption by the General Assembly. Based on a study in 2009, the league determined that instant runoff voting would ensure that the candidates elected would have at least some level of support from a majority of the voters. We note the following issues regarding the current plurality voting system used in Maryland. One, under the current plurality voting system used in Maryland, the candidate with the highest number percentage of votes wins. In a crowded field, the winner may, may be a candidate who receives a very small number percentage of votes and was not the choice of a large number of voters. Two, the plurality system, which allows, also allows a candidate with extreme views but supported by a united faction of voters to win the election. When a plurality of votes determines the winner, voters are often afraid to vote for the candidate they most favor because of their fear that a minority faction could win the election when the majority divides their votes among similar candidates. This undermines confidence in the electoral process. A different issue can be the requirement for and cost of a runoff election if a minority vote is required. To ensure that candidates are supported by a majority, 50% plus one vote of the voters, some states require the winner to receive a majority of the votes cast. Currently, 10 states, Alabama, Arkansas, Georgia, Mississippi, North Carolina, Oklahoma, South Carolina, South Dakota, Texas, and Vermont, require at least some of their offices, winners to have a majority of the votes cast. When a majority is not received, excuse me, achieved in a single election, there are usually primary runoffs a month or so later between a predetermined number, but usually the top two candidates. The problem, though, with traditional runoff elections are, they're expensive. They delay the completion of the election process and often are reduced, have reduced voter participation. That's all.
Thank you. Who would like to go next?
Good evening. My name is Grace Ramsey, and I'm here on behalf of Fair Vote in support of this legislation. And I think we've covered kind of the content of the bill a little bit more, so I'll give a little bit more background on what we do and why we are so supportive of this. So Fair Vote advocates for ranked choice voting across the country, but we are headquartered here in Montgomery County, so we're thrilled to be here on our home turf. But I personally came to Montgomery County from Minnesota, where I worked for a group called Fair Vote Minnesota that helped to implement this in Minneapolis for the municipal elections. So I've been there firsthand, I have educated voters on this, I've worked with the city to do so. And one thing that we found, just to answer a couple of the questions that were raised, wait times for one, I was there just a couple weeks ago for their municipal elections, and there were wait times, but that's because they ran out of ballots because their turnout was so much higher than expected. So we saw people really engaging with this system and really enjoying having the choice and the kind of robust conversation that came out of it in the campaign space as well as amongst voters and across the city. So just a more in-depth dialogue, rather than candidates fighting it out and hurling insults. They were hurling ideas. And typically, you know, there isn't such a clear case for this conversation to be so necessary, but in seeing the incredibly crowded fields, I think it's wonderful to be in a democracy where so many people want to step forward, but we need a system that's responsive to that interest and that ensures that voters are empowered through that process. And I think that this bill enables the start of that conversation, and I think in the working session, we can discuss, there's a lot of different ways that you can tackle this and the ways that you can approach it, but as a basis, I think we are really hopeful that this conversation can continue and that we're able to, to look at the different options and, and address the problems that we're seeing.
Hi, my name is Chris Hughes. I'm a staff attorney at Fair Vote, and I just wanted to take over a little bit from where Grace left off on the administration question and the implementation question of ranked choice voting. So I work part of my time with Fair Vote, but part of my time with our independent project of election administrators who are called the Ranked Choice Voting Resource Center, and we produce and provide best practices resources to any jurisdiction that currently runs ranked choice voting elections or is interested in running ranked choice voting elections to make sure that they can get their elections up and running off the ground really easily without, you know, hitting some stumbling blocks. And it, the great thing about it is that ranked choice voting's now been used in the United States in cities for more than 10 years, so there's a wealth of best practices resources out there, and it's just a matter of collecting those things, getting them out to, to the administrators who are running these elections and making sure that they just have access to the resources so that they can run the best election that they can. So, thanks.
Delegate Barbe.
All right. So in the other jurisdictions where this is used, how many of them have elections that are like our at-large council race where the top four vote-getters win?
So Cambridge, Massachusetts elects its entire city council with ranked choice voting, and it's all at-large, so nine seats are elected at-large. They use a system called single transferable vote, so that's a proportional system. And so basically, it ensures that those nine seats are earned by, by getting a percentage that only nine people can. In that case, it's about 10%. So in that city, voters rank all of the candidates, and if you get above the 10% threshold, you're elected. And it creates an interesting situation where representation is defined slightly differently because you're not districted, so people can kind of define how they would like to be districted, whether it's by your neighborhood, whether it's by your community, and whatever lines you choose to draw yourselves.
Okay. Well, no, you answered my question. So let me, my last question is going to be this. Let's say, for the sake of argument, I vote using this system for county council at-large, and I decide to vote for 10 people, one through 10. And let's just say, for the sake of argument, that my top four votes win. I, you know, I picked the winners. Let's say my good friend, Runa here, votes for a different set of 10 people, and none of the 10 people she votes for come, you know, come above 50% or, I guess that's the proper way to say it, come above 50%. Her votes would be redistributed, correct?
So your votes would.
To her, to her next choices.
Yes, yes.
Well, now, here's, here's, here's what I need to have explained to me, then. Am I disadvantaging myself by voting for the most popular people? My votes aren't going to be redistributed because among my one through 10 are one, two, or three of the ones who came in with more than the requisite number of votes. I mean, I'm trying to understand whether or not the people who vote for the winners, because they don't get their votes redistributed, have their choices, have fewer bites at the apple.
Delegate Barbe, if you voted for the winners, you're a happy camper. You got the apple pie. All four of your candidates won. Thumbs up for you.
Should I get your vote?
There's no distribution needed.
All right. Point to Senator Kagan. Delegate Collison and then Delegate Barclay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Ramsey and Mr. Hughes, in your experience, is the, does the technology do the distribution of voting? So this is all done by computer, and then it's checked by humans to, to make sure?
Yeah. So every major voting system vendor has some form of ranked choice voting capability right now, so all the voting systems can do internal ranked choice voting tabulation, except ESNS, which is used in Maryland, they have an external tabulator that you export the vote records to, but it's still a computerized process that can be checked by humans afterward to be sure that the process was correct.
So I just want to confirm that I heard the right thing.
Yeah.
We do have the capacity in Maryland?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Delegate Barclay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at Senator Kagan, I'm looking at your chart, all the different races. And it looks like in about all the places it was mayor races. Well, at least mayor and then other things too. But in all the places where it's mayor, right now, before the ranked choice voting, were they required to have 50% to win?
In a few of the places, but not all. So some places had a plurality structure or it was, some, yeah, mostly plurality and then others, it would, it would have been kind of a top two primary and then going on to the general. So some had that 50% requirement, but others-
Is it even split or is it more requires the majority?
I would, I'd say a relatively even split off the top of my head, but I'm not entirely sure.
Because it seems like places where you would need 50%, the system sounds great. But when you don't, I'm not sure. But, thank you.
Any more questions for now? We will have a work session on this in Annapolis. Okay, wonderful. Well, I think with that, that ends, yes, that ends the hearing on this bill, which is MC 1918. And I'm going to pass it back to Chairman Robinson, right?
Thank you. Now we're going to turn it over to Delegate Gilchrist to chair the Land Use Transportation and Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's go to MC 2418, the archery hunting safety zone bill, Amy Salmon, Peggy Dennis, and Elisa Carbone. This bill is requested by the Chair on behalf of the Montgomery County Council.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the delegation. Amy Salmon on behalf of the County Council. We are here to talk about archery hunting, safety zones, and tree stands again. You may recall last year that legislation passed that reduced the archery safety zone from 100 yards to 50 yards from a house, church, or other building or camp occupied by human beings. During the process, during delegation sessions, in addition to requiring a tree stand was added to the bill. A tree stand is a platform that's affixed to a tree to elevate the position of the hunter. MC 2418 would repeal the tree stand requirement for the archery hunting within the safety zone and replace it with language that states that the person needs to be at an elevated position that allows the hunter to shoot in a downward trajectory when hunting within the safety zone. My understanding from the County Council is that they've received complaints that the tree stand requirement is impractical. A lot of people in the county do not have a tree that would be able to have a tree stand affixed to. So they're looking for another way to safely elevate people and ensure that it's shooting in a downward trajectory. The language in this bill has precedent. It was, the guidance was taken from the county, excuse me, the Montgomery County Code for discharge of firearm in an urban setting, which is 50 acres. Anyway, for the, these reasons, the County Council supports this bill. And I will open it for any questions.
Yes, Delegate Resnick has a question. Delegate Resnick has a question later. So, go, go ahead. The people who signed up were Peggy Dennis and Elisa Carbone.
Peggy Dennis, past president of the Montgomery County Civic Federation, and it's always a pleasure to be here. I want to remind you that a few years ago, when we passed a resolution asking all of our elected officials, both county council and state, to take every possible measure to make it easier to get bow and arrow hunters into our neighborhoods, our resolution passed almost unanimously. There was only one vote in opposition. And people are still coming to me and saying, how can I get a bow and arrow hunter into my neighborhood? I know the, the provision of the safety zone bill that passed last year to add the tree stand requirement was made in good faith and with good intentions, thinking that safety was of primary importance. I have to say, safety is of primary importance for every bow and arrow hunter. And those who know about this form of hunting know that it is one of the safest sports in the U.S. In Maryland, the DNR has no reported incident of any other, other than the hunter, person, horse or horseback rider, pet, or livestock being injured by a bow and arrow hunter. They do have reports of hunters falling out of tree stands and being injured. And in our front yards and our backyards, many of us do not have trees that are appropriate for a tree stand. We do, however, have hills that slope downward. We have second-story balconies, second-story windows, elevated decks. We have all manner of places where the hunter can have the requisite downward trajectory. So we're very much in support of this bill, and we hope it will go one step further to making it a little easier for our homeowners to get good, safe bow and arrow hunters into their yards, doing the job that they see as a public service and which we so desperately need.
Elisa Carbone, and I'm testifying just as a private citizen. In my neighborhood in Silver Spring, we've been overrun with deer and we have a high incidence of Lyme disease and our wooded backyards look like they've been sprayed with Agent Orange. And we really wanted to do something. So we invited bow hunters. They came beginning in September and they were coming every week, sometimes a couple of times a week. And then in mid-November, I noticed they weren't coming as much. And I called and I said, what's up, you guys? Is, you know, is everything okay? And they said, well, the leaves are down. Now when we climb up into the tree stand, we feel like everyone can see us. And they really pride themselves on being discreet. You know, they're very, you know, they pull into the driveway, nobody sees the dead deer. They, they really want to be discreet. And so we solved it this year by making sure that everybody who could possibly catch a glimpse of them has been notified. The, the people in, in support of this in the neighborhood, the ratio is very high. But there are a lot of areas in the neighborhood where there are bushes that they could sit on at the top of steep ravines, shooting down into stream beds. So it would be just as safe. And that would be great for next year. In the next breath, the hunter also said that a friend of his the weekend before had been on his way up to the tree stand to clip his safety and from 15 feet up fell, broke several vertebrae and shattered his heel, 60-year-old man. So we want to make the hunting in our backyards as safe and welcoming as possible for our hunters and to help them meet their desire to be discreet. This law would help with that.
Thank you. The other two are up there. Had you signed up or are you there for questions?
I missed the cutoff. I did sign up this afternoon.
Would you, would you say your name and who you're with, please?
Sure. Jonathan Aggion, AGH, Iowan, testifying as a private citizen.
And, and do you support or oppose?
Support.
Okay. Let me go to Delegate Resnick for a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two quick questions because I'm a little confused. And as someone who actually has voted for just about all of these hunting and bow hunting bills, is there a definition of elevated position? Could it be as high as you want it to be? Could you do it from a hot air balloon?
I think every experienced bow and arrow hunter knows a good, safe elevated position when he or she sees it. As long as it's got that downward trajectory that is safe, that gives you the necessary vision to be sure that you're aiming right at your target and at nothing else.
But there's nothing in the law that requires experience?
No, but to be licensed, you do have to, I believe, have some experience in training.
But under this law, I can stand on the roof of a barn.
If it gave you the right trajectory or trajectory, yes.
And presumably in Hartford County, they have stronger tree limbs or more privacy in their trees when the fall leaves fall?
I have no idea what goes on in the minds of the people in Hartford County. I believe they do not have such a-
I'm just worried about our trees.
You're worried about the tree limbs?
Well, clearly they're weaker because if they can't afford a tree stand here in Montgomery County.
I doubt that.
If I may try and answer your question, I reviewed the law really carefully and actually called several of your offices to try and find out more about MC 1017 when it was passed last year. And basically, if the hunter sets up a tree stand, there's, there's really no limit for how, for how high off the ground. There's no minimum height defined. So really, you know, it, somebody sets up a tree stand and goes five feet off the ground, technically I think that would be within the law, but you still have the issues that we brought up of having a tree, a suitable tree that's, you know, safe and then just being able to have a good area to hunt.
Okay. Well, I'm less worried about close to the ground as higher up. But we can talk about it in, in committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Chris, I see you up there. Have, have you gotten complaints about the tree stand language? And tell us who you're with.
So I'm Jeremy Chris, Office of Agriculture in the county. I've not heard of any complaints. That's not to say that there hasn't been any. Obviously, this bill, the first time that we could have tested this bill was this hunting season that just started in the fall. We don't have a tabulation yet on the deer that have been harvested with the 2017-18 overall hunting season. I do know from DNR, though, that we, in Montgomery County, we have some of the highest harvest rates using archery. So archery is a very effective tool here in Montgomery County, where the ag reserve is really the only place that you can discharge a firearm. Two-thirds of the county that's outside of the ag reserve, the only tool we have to use is, is a bow. So, and we use it effectively.
And have you heard from the Farm Bureau on this?
The Farm Bureau supports this bill that we're discussing here today. They knew that this bill was amended by the delegation in the work session because of what Hartford County's bill has. And I'm not familiar with Hartford County's community. I do know that they don't have the population that we have. They still have a rather large rural area. They don't, they're not as highly urbanized like we are here in Montgomery County.
Delegate Ludke has a question.
Just a quick one because I think there's a valid question in my mind about definitions here. And I think it was just as true with tree stand because we don't define what a tree stand is. So have you all had a chance to talk to DNR police, since they'd be the ones, one supposes enforcing this, about whether they think the language is adequate for enforcement purposes?
So in our discussions with Paul Pedito, when we were discussing the bill that simply reduced the safety distance, they felt that this was going to be helpful for Montgomery County.
Right.
There was no concern expressed by DNR about the tree stand. Tree stands are customary for hunting in a rural area.
Right.
And I think that, as Amy indicated, there are, there are challenges with having the tree stand in a highly urbanized area. A lot of it has to do with what Peggy was saying. The hunter is trying to be very discreet. They, they don't want people seeing them.
Well, and there's some places like at Lois Green where, you know, there's, is it Lois Green? The, the Isaac Walton League up there where they have a stand, but it's not a tree stand. It's just its own tower that they use, right?
Right.
I, I totally get your point and agree with you. I think we just need to circle back with DNR and make sure from an enforcement perspective that they're comfortable with the language elevated position, that they know how to appropriately interpret that and feel it would be, it would be appropriate language, I think.
Okay.
And to the gentleman who, who tried to sign up but didn't, would you just give 20, 20 or 30 seconds, please?
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. As a bow hunter in a tight-knit community dealing with a huge deer problem, I'm often approached by neighbors about hunting their property. In most cases, I can't hunt their parcel due to safety zone or other safety considerations. My neighbors often plead with me to reconsider. Over the last five years, the county has averaged over 2,000 reported deer collisions. One in 2,500 of these accidents leads to at least one human fatality, according to a report to Congress from 10 years ago. Deer over-
There's another question from-
Sure.
Delegate Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I would like to revisit what Delegates Resnick and Ludke brought up with regard to this standard, which does not exist. So I guess my concern, and I think through past debate on this issue, this delegation knows my sentiment with regard to bow hunting. But clearly, the idea of the tree stand was put into the legislation to ensure that while we were cutting the safety zone in half in the legislation that passed last year and did not have my support, and once again, this bill will not have my support. But my question is, anyone can make the allegation that when they loosed the arrow, they were in an elevated position. So it continued on a minimal trajectory because, yeah, my position was elevated about 12 inches off the ground. See that little lump? And when it continued and carried into a residence or into a, a family pet, or into a child playing in a backyard, all that individual will have to do is say, I complied with the law because I was elevated. I think that is a real problem. I think it needs to be looked at very closely. We were assured repeatedly when this bill was before the delegation last year that, oh, no, this is not about stalking. This is about bow hunters in tree stands, elevated positions. And now it's quickly turning into a stalking bill that the individual need, only needs say, I was elevated when I loosed the arrow. So I think that's a concern. They will be absolutely within the law if they're five inches higher than the earth below that they were targeting the, the deer. So I think we need to be able to create a more definitive measurement as to what elevation is. Thank you.
Delegate Kramer, if I may, I agree that there should be a definitive definition of what elevated means. But, you know, it's like with any law, when somebody loses an arrow and, and it goes into the ground, the police, you know, if somebody gets hurt, if, if anybody has gotten hurt by this in the past, and I feel like your question would have merit, but honestly, there's no instance of, of any injury to human or pet or structure that can be attributed to bow hunting. And even in Virginia, where they've been tracking this very closely since 1958, there's no instance of any injury besides the bow hunter.
And I would take issue with that in that the first year this legislation was heard, we had people who testified that they had found arrows in the fences of their yards. So thank God, no one was struck by it, but only by the grace of God had they not been. And, and the first time, the first time a child is struck by an arrow because we have reduced the safety zone over the past, what, four years, three years, from 150 yards to 100 yards to 50 yards?
Delegate Kramer, do you have a question? Are you done?
Isn't that so?
Well, very good.
Delegate Kramer, I look forward to continuing our debate from last year, our spirited and cordial debate about bow hunting's efficacy and ethics. But I, I posit that your question isn't backed up by the facts. Thank you.
Delegate Noon has a question. Oh, no, no, he doesn't. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. That concludes 2418. We will move to 10418, Montgomery County, Damascus, Delegate Ludke. And Delegate Ludke, I understand Seth Gottman is coming up with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I sometimes criticize my students when they write the phrase "very unique." But if anything qualifies as very unique, this is a very unique bill. So let me explain a little bit of background here. People often ask me what unifies the, the towns that my district represents. Because we've got a lot of small towns that are spread out across a pretty wide geographic area in District 14. And I sometimes jokingly tell people that they're the towns that feel like they're most ignored in Montgomery County. You hear a lot of concern from up-county residents that they feel like their voice-
County. You hear a lot of concern from up-county residents that they feel like their voices aren't being heard down here in Rockville or in Annapolis or wherever. And, and sometimes, frankly, I, I think that, that is a reasonable interpretation. I certainly feel that way about Burtonsville, where I live. In Damascus, we've heard concerns from constituents who don't feel like they, their opinions are paid much attention to, particularly on zoning issues. And so in looking for potential ways to deal with that, we hit upon this bill. And so what this bill does is if Damascus, if Damascus ever decides to reincorporate, because they weren't incorporated town until 1906, when they disincorporated because they wanted a state to pay for the roads, which, totally fair. If Damascus ever decides to reincorporate, they will have what's called concurrent zoning jurisdiction. It's the same type of zoning jurisdiction that Tacoma Park and Kensington have today. Essentially, the way it works is that if county, city council opposes a zoning action, that a supermajority of the planning board has to vote for it to pass. It increases the, the, the level of majority required from the planning board. It's a pretty straightforward concept. This bill does not in any way imply that Damascus will reincorporate. That is something that I personally have no opinion on. It is entirely and should be entirely up to the residents of Damascus to determine that. But if they choose to do so, it would give them the same authority that other parts of the county are, currently receive. And I'll, I'll just add, I watched the county council discussion on the bills that we are presenting tonight and Wednesday, and I, I think the discussion of this bill in the council was a case in point of why this bill exists, because it was dismissed out of hand, just dismissed out of hand, that Damascus voters should have the right. And the motives of the folks in Damascus who are interested in this were questioned, I think, inappropriately by members of the council, and ironically, by members of the council who live in Tacoma Park, which has the exact same authority. So I appreciate your consideration of the issue. I'll pass it on to one of my constituents who has been working on these issues and look forward to further discussion and any questions.
Okay, for the record, my name is Seth Gottesman. I found out moments before the session that I'd be speaking, so forgive my lack of eloquence. So in 2015, in Damascus, we found out about two development projects that were inconsistent with the community. They were very, very dense. They were very packed. They were not fitting with the, what, what the community had envisioned. It wasn't consistent with the environment. There was one project that had 84 units that were on 3.88 parcels, 3.88 acres of land. Another would have about tripled the density on a small road without a traffic light. There were safety considerations. There are traffic considerations. The community overwhelmingly, through oral testimony at a, at a planning board hearing, through written testimony, through public and private correspondence with county council members, with planning department staff, overwhelmingly rejected what was planned for the community. It became evident that the vision in the master plan was inconsistent with the vision, the residents of the community. So for that reason, in Damascus, we sought to update our master plan. The county council was not supportive. They were not responsive. They were not supportive. We were put off. In, in the case of one project, we had 30 people, including several experts testifying to their profession, overturned, really without discussion. So basically, there are a lot of flaws that we've uncovered in the planning process. It rejects the voices of the community. So, and so basically, what this bill would do, what Delegate Lukee alluded to, was that it wouldn't incorporate Damascus. It would just change the benefits of incorporation should it occur in Damascus.
Delegate Corman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'm sorry you had such a difficult experience with the county and planning. Delegate Lukee, you mentioned a few times, if the people of Damascus decided to reincorporate, but maybe it's different because they were previously a municipality, but incorporation requires council approval, right? I mean, you have to go through the council to get, become a municipality?
It requires, my understanding, and I, I'm not an expert on municipalities, so any of you who are, I'm looking at Delegate Carr here, let me know. My understanding is that in order to incorporate, a area needs not only council support, but also the, a vote at referendum of the people within the area that would constitute the municipality.
I'm just thinking, in Delegate Carr's district, Rollingwood, a few years ago, there was a vote before the council. The council rejected it. There were efforts in other places. The council hasn't been receptive. So, you know, I don't particularly have a view on this bill at this point, but I just wonder if it really is doing anything, if you still have to go to the council to get the authority to become a municipality.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that. I think they're two related but distinct conversations. And frankly, in the case of Rollingwood, you know, the justifications I've heard for why the council rejected it were justifications that I found not in keeping with the intent of Maryland law. There should be discussions and agreement between the council, the county council and residents of a community, but I think there are members of the county council that have taken the blanket position that no new municipality should ever be created in Montgomery County, and I think that's inappropriate.
Delegate Resnick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So again, I don't have a position on this bill at this point, but my argument, my question is the slippery slope argument. So I know that in the past Germantown, the area that we define as Germantown, has, has tried or contemplated at least twice to incorporate. And one of the reasons that the process was abandoned was the fact that they don't, they wouldn't have zoning and land use jurisdiction, among other benefits that a municipality would otherwise have. My question then is, why just Damascus? Why couldn't Germantown or Bethesda or Silver Spring or Wheaton also have the same rights to be able to, to get this zoning and land use authority if they should choose to go through that same process?
I, I, it's a valid question. I'll, I'll make two distinctions, first of all, or make a distinction, first of all. There's a distinction between the type of zoning jurisdiction that this bill allows for and the type of zoning jurisdiction that exists in, like, Rockville and Gaithersburg. This is much more limited. It still pays appropriate deference to the reason why the planning board was created in the first place, which is that we need some countywide ability to plan, right? Because our communities are interrelated. I have no objection to any other municipality having this type of jurisdiction. My understanding of how it has worked in practice in Tacoma Park and Kensington is, is it has facilitated a, a more thorough discussion between members of the local town council and the planning board. And frankly, if any part of the county wanted to incorporate and have this type of jurisdiction, I would be totally comfortable with it. I think it's a relatively moderate approach that allows for local input, but still allows for countywide planning.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
There was no one else signed up for that bill, and that concludes the hearing on that bill. Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thanks. Now I'd like to turn it over to the Chair, the Metro Washington Area Committee. Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are going to take things in a slightly different order. We're going to actually go in reverse order for the, the bills that are remaining. So the, the bill that we will hear next is PGMC 109-18, Montgomery and Prince George's County Public Utilities Property, Property Management. This is Delegate Holmes's bill from the Prince George's County delegation. And we do have Robert Glydwell signed up from Washington Gas in opposition to the bill. So we don't have the, a supporter here for the bill, but we do have opposing testimony.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the delegation. For the record, my name is Robert Glydwell, representing Washington Gas. Also at the table is Ronan Goldstone, who will be representing Washington Gas in the upcoming session. We are opposed to the bill. It's definitely a collection of bad ideas and created into a very bad bill. I reached out to the sponsor of the bill early this week. Couldn't, couldn't reach anyone, get a response back. I wanted to talk to him before, before the hearing, but I'll, I'm sure I'll see him tomorrow evening. The management companies can already participate in, in what's called our Automatic Name Change Program, where if a tenant moves out, it goes into the property management or another person's name. When a new tenant comes in and they activate the bill, it automatically comes out of the property manager or building owner's name. Aside from that, there are so many privacy issues with allowing a property manager, which is undefined. That could be somebody, a next-door neighbor that agrees to come over and check and make sure the tenants haven't, you know, damaged the house. Allowing third parties like that to have access and the ability to force name change, account changes, things like that, is just very dangerous. It violates the trust that we have between our customers and the utility. One of the things that I found most shocking in the bill was that it would prohibit a utility from offering a payment plan to a customer, which goes against Comar. And Comar were directed to make a good faith effort to work out a payment plan, a payment arrangement, to any low-income customer or any customer that may be financially struggling. We see that a lot. I mean, folks fall behind in the winter. They have a high heating bill. They call us up. We, we put the arrears on a payment plan. They get caught up in the summer and, you know, that's just something that we do all the time. But this bill would prevent that. So I'm not sure what the purpose of that would be, but we certainly oppose that. Again, as I touched on earlier, property manager's not defined, and a managed property, as defined in the bill, could be virtually anyone. So we don't think it's a good bill for the residents of Maryland. Certainly, it's not a bill that Washington Gas supports, and that concludes our testimony.
Okay. Are there any questions for this witness? Delegate Cullison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And hi, I'm sorry, it's been a long day.
Sure.
I can't find in the bill the prohibition against setting up the payment plans. Where is that?
It is...
Unless I don't have all of it.
It's on the fourth page, first line.
Fourth page, first line.
Okay. Then I must have an incorrect copy, because I only have three pages in my bill, so that could be the reason. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions for this witness? Delegate Resnick, did you have a question?
No, but just for clarity, Delegate Cullison, my understanding is, is that there were two bills marked 10918. One of them is actually 10818. That might be the reason.
Okay. And my understanding is, because this bill came in on the Prince George's side, it'll go through their delegation first before it'll be considered by our delegation. So thank you. That concludes the testimony on PGMC 109-18.
Thank you, Delegate Carr. Have a good evening.
The next bill would be PGMC 108-18, which may be marked as 109-18. This is Maryland-Washington Regional District, Prince George's County Municipal Authority, requested by Delegate Holmes of the Prince George's County delegation. And we have Eddie Pounds, who is testifying in support on behalf of the City of Bowie.
Good evening, thank you. Okay, now we're hot. Good evening, I'm Eddie Pounds, here on behalf of both the City of Bowie as well as the City of College Park, for the record. This is a bill you might remember from, from last year. It's about fences, and it applies just to Prince George's County. It essentially prescribes municipalities with the authority to regulate the height of fences and allows a municipality to be more restrictive than the county. And essentially, why it applies to City of Bowie and College Park, and why it means so much to them, is it's a, it's a savings, if you will, for taxpayers who have to hire a land use and zoning attorney to get a variance. But they also have to get two permits, one from the city and one from the county. So this is an effort to streamline the process and also lessen the burden on our taxpayers. And so last session, this made it through 15 of 16 steps, if you will. It came out of both Montgomery County and Prince George's County delegations, came out of House, the House Committee on Environment and Transportation, and made it to the Senate floor. And unfortunately, it died an untimely death before the time expired. So we're looking forward to getting the bill all the way across the finish line of the session, and I encourage and urge a favorable report.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for this witness?
Seeing none, that concludes the testimony on this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our next bill will be PGMC 112-18, Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission Service Charges, requested by the Chair on, on behalf of WSSC. This was, I had a similar bill last year, but this is not my bill. This is WSSC's bill. So we have, the first witness testifying in support is Karen Riley from WSSC.
Good evening. My name is Karen Riley. For the record, I'm the Director of Intergovernmental Relations for the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission, WSSC. And we are putting forth this piece of legislation this year after a very extensive deep dive into our rate structure, which we are working towards concluding. Last year, we were cited by the Public Service Commission for unfair rates, and we took that opportunity to revisit our rate structure, which had not been done in 25 years. Since then, we have convened a bi-county work group. So we had representatives from both Montgomery and Prince George's County to look at rate structures and potential rate structures. We also had a stakeholder work group, where we had members of our community, ranging from residential, different types of businesses, to look at our, look at potential rate structures as well. We did not do this in a vacuum. We were guided by some of the nation's foremost rate structure consultants. And one of the things we learned, again, we do not have the opportunity or the legislation or legal authority to create class-based rate structure. We are the only jurisdiction, we believe, in Maryland. Baltimore County has it. Howard County has it. Annapolis has it. The City of Rockville has this opportunity. They may not exercise it. We may not exercise it, but we haven't really had the full opportunity to explore every type of rate structure that is available to us. So with this legislation, this is enabling legislation. This is not to mandate that we adopt a class-based rate structure. This will allow us to further explore all of the opportunities that are available to us in terms of different rate structures as we're going forward and looking into seeing what is the best option for our customers as well as the commission. A class-based rate structure, again, may not be the best option for us, but we don't even have the opportunity to fully explore it. It would allow us to enact some of our public policy concerns, such as revenue stability, affordability, conservation. Those are things we all need to look at as we go further to look for what our customers and your constituents need to have in order to have safe, reliable water and waste water services. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I just had a question before to kick it off. Now, I know that WSSC's been doing a lot of work to look into the rate structure options going forward. So do you know if, in that process, you have come across another water and sewer utility anywhere in any state that is banned from having rate classes?
Actually, our consultant has told us, and he's worked on thousands of rate structures. He has never seen a jurisdiction that does not have this capability.
Thank you. So questions? I see Delegate Kramer's light on.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Karen. How are you this evening?
Good. How are you doing?
Doing well, thank you. Just a couple of questions. Would you agree that this bill is very similar, if not almost identical, to the legislation that has died in the delegation subcommittee each of the last two years? Would that be accurate?
It's similar, but we did put some distinctions in there in order to fully demonstrate that this is not a mandate. For instance, this legislation would not be enacted until January 1st of 2020. It would still require more of a deep dive. It would still require a bi-county working group and a and a stakeholder working group. So though it has a similar goal, the process would be different.
But it would enable WSSC to do what the legislation that died the last two years, would you agree that that is...
To create class-based, yes.
Correct, to create, yes. And, uh, as has been represented, uh, in the past on this legislation, um, very likely that class would mean that you have, uh, commercial separated out from residential. And the question that I have asked each of the last two years to the commission representatives on this, um, is simply, is, has there ever been anything that has been done in the way of a study that indicates it costs more for the commission to push a gallon of water through a pipe to a business than it costs to push a gallon of water through a pipe to a house? Now, in each of the past years when I've asked the question, the answer's been no. Has anything changed in the last year, uh, that would, uh, change the answer of the commission? If I, on that same question, any empirical studies, anything that would indicate it costs the commission more? So that therefore you would be able to justify why you would charge more to push a gallon of water through a pipe to one entity as opposed to a different entity?
Well, we did complete a cost of service study, but I would first like to clarify that...
A cost of, I'm sorry.
Service study.
Service study.
Um, which we had not done in quite a few years, but I would like to clarify that just because this is class-based legislation, this does not mean it's residential versus non-residential. It could be based on meter size, seasonal rates are considered class rate, we can look at different business entities such as, we heard from the laundromats, um, who were part of our stakeholder group, that would may, could possibly have a different type of rate structure. So, a class-based rate structure, and unfortunately that seems to be the, the default, is residential and non-residential, but that's not the only way a rate structure can be based on class. So, that's not what we would automatically look at, and that's not what we would automatically default to, it would be one of the twos that would be available to us to use.
Maybe not automatically, but ultimately, that could be the outcome.
It's a potential, but it could also be based on meter size. Um, I believe Annapolis has seasonal rates, so it depends on what the best option is. Now, we did complete a cost of study service, which we had not completed in the past two years. Um, and to your point about empirical data that shows how much it costs, there not, there's nothing differential about it. However, a cost of service study does not take into consideration some of the public policy, um, activities and considerations that we would like to have when defining a rate structure, a few of which I just mentioned, again, affordability, conservation, revenue stability. So a cost of service study is raw, um, raw data, but it does not allow us to look at what policy considerations we have to take into account when we're designing a rate structure. And I'm happy to provide that to you, it's on our website, um, on our rate structure study website.
Would you agree that the vast majority of those policies that you just mentioned could in fact be contemplated and enacted under your existing authority? And that, uh, there is a myriad of options open to the commission for changing their rate structures that would not involve this particular legislation, is that accurate?
We are limited in what we can look at, so the myriad is not, is in the eye of the beholder. We don't have the ability to look at the class basis, so we don't know if that's the best for us, what, what we've looked at already, we don't know if that's the best for us, because we haven't been able to fully explore all of the options, because they're not available to us.
Well, you certainly could explore it, you might not necessarily be able to implement it without this legislation, but you certainly could explore it.
And we have...
And quite frankly, there are significant other alternatives, would you agree?
I wouldn't know, because we haven't explored all of the alternatives. So, we have looked at some class-based bills, we haven't been able to put them forth, because we cannot implement them legally.
Thank you, thank you.
Delegate Barvey.
Okay, um, suppose you wanted to go to a seasonal, uh, system like, uh, the city of Annapolis, why don't you compose an idea for doing that and then offer local legislation to implement that specifically?
We can look into doing that as an option, but right now, we are look, we would like to look at all of the different classes that are available to us, in order to do that.
No, what I'm saying is, if you feel that there's a particular kind of class structure that you think would be beneficial for conservation or some other public policy purpose, uh, you could make a proposal and have a delegate introduce a bill to do that, and we could vote on that, couldn't we?
We could look into that, but again, that would be limiting to us as we go forward and looking at our different rate structures in the future. So, our rate structure, again, we hadn't looked at it in twenty-five years. So this was an opportunity for us to rectify a situation where, quite frankly, we are the only jurisdiction in this state who don't have the opportunity to look at the different types of rate structures that are available.
Okay, thank you, any other questions? Uh, seeing none, that concludes the hearing on this bill, uh, because... Uh, forgive me, there's opposition to the bill. So we have, uh, a panel of opponents coming up. We have Avi Halpert from United Therapeutics Corporation and Ron Weinhold from Aoba. Like to start.
You're, you're more polished. You, you, you come before and I'm gonna stutter and they're just...
I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
All right, uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the delegation, I'm Ron Weinhold, Vice President of Government Affairs with the Department and Office Building Association of Metropolitan Washington. Uh, we are, again, in opposition, uh, to this legislation, it has been mentioned, it's, it's been in two prior sessions, very similar legislation, was extensively discussed in the Metro Washington Area Committee, there were a series of meetings, uh, in the 2017 session. Obviously, our members as owners and managers of commercial and residential, um, buildings, purchased quite a bit of water and sewer service from WSSC, so anything that impacts rates has a very significant impact on our members, and these are costs that must be passed through to our commercial and residential, um, tenants. A couple of quick points, and you do have my written testimony on this. As has been mentioned, uh, WSSC is moving forward with adopting, uh, new rate structure. None of the three proposals for new rates requires this legislation. It is, so I would decouple that issue right up front, WSSC is gonna move forward with adopting from among those three rates after they get county feedback, and they don't need this bill for any of those three options. As has been mentioned, the bill wouldn't even take effect until 2020. With regard to other jurisdictions that has been said has this authority, of the five jurisdictions on page two of the bill that they list, only one actually uses classified rates, that's the city of Annapolis. Local jurisdictions that do not use it are pretty much everybody else around this area, uh, such as Baltimore City, Arlington, Anarundel, Fairfax, Howard Counties, city of Alexandria, and Frederick do not use this approach. With regard to, uh, cost-based rates, uh, following up on, um, a couple of comments, with respect to seasonal rates, I don't see why WSSC could not adopt seasonal rates today if they chose to do so, it doesn't require a separate class, simply means you have to offer that opportunity to all of the customers, and not just say that certain people can do it and others cannot. So there's no impediment to their adopting seasonal rates today if that's what they wish to do. Delegate Kramer's question about what studies are new, uh, the cost of service study that was done by the consultants for WSSC earlier this year, did, uh, look at the cost of serving, uh, customers of residential, multifamily and, and, uh, non-residential customers. They, it showed that for non-residential customers, uh, they are being overcharged by twenty-five percent for water, uh, and thirty-five percent for sewer. And that's what we're afraid of would happen if they had the ability to single out businesses as a commercial class, uh, that it would not be based on the cost of service, it would be based on, uh, basically, uh, politically, that's what's easy to do, and we think that's the wrong way to go, and that's why we oppose the bill. Thank you.
My turn. Good evening, thank you, my name is Avi Halpert, I'm with United Therapeutics Corporation, we're based in Silver Spring, Maryland, we are a drug manufacturer, uh, that does hardcore drug manufacturing in, in an urban environment, we are a large water consumer, and we are a large water consumer because the FDA and other regulatory and equipment requirements, uh, require us to use on average 1.9 million gallons of water every month. We do, uh, appreciate water of sufficient quality and quantity, uh, to meet these requirements to produce lifesaving drugs to our 20,000 patients worldwide. UT has been following this legislation, I've been watching the back of Ron's head at all the WSSC and said it was time for industry to come in here and, and support this as well. WSSC has been consumed for over two years with trying to replace the volumetric rate structure that the PSC has determined was discriminatory. WSSC's new solution for the identified deficiencies in the rate structure is to request that the state empower it to continue to discriminate among user classes, this time with legislative authority. Frankly, we do not understand why our company and other large users who currently pay more, uh, twenty-five percent more, as, as Ron stated, for water services and thirty-five percent more for sewer services, or why WSSC believes that this is fair and reasonable. We are more than willing to pay our fair share, but not significantly more than, uh, what's required. If WSSC cannot act within its limited grant of authority to have one uniform rate structure in the sanitary district, legislators should not reward it by granting it more authority via user class legislation, rather, the legislature and the public should expect and require a bi-county agency that is not elected and is not directly answerable to the public to use its limited powers to set user rates that are fair and reasonable for all users, both large volume and low volume. High-volume users such as biotech companies do not waste water, but need it as part of our manufacturing process. The PSC and the cost of service study provided a roadmap for WSSC to follow to set reasonable rates and identified less onerous alternatives than expanding WSSC's authority to set rates. These alternatives include phasing in rate increases and ensuring that there are programs available to help low-income residents pay their bills. Expanding WSSC's authority should be the last resort. Thank you.
Thank you, so, Mr. Halpert, could you tell me, does United Therapeutics have, uh, these type of operations that consume a lot of water, uh, in any other jurisdictions outside of the WSSC territory, and if so, where?
In, in, uh, Raleigh, in, uh, in Durham County, North Carolina.
Thank you. Uh, and questions, I believe Delegate Kramer has his light on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ron, quick question to follow up on a comment that you made, because this was a question I was trying to get at. You've indicated that there are alternative rate structures that WSSC has prepared in response to, uh, addressing the issues raised by the Public Service Commission, is that correct? So that there are in fact alternatives, WSSC has prepared them, and they do not require this legislation?
Yes, Delegate Kramer, I, I followed it fairly closely as a member of the stakeholders group and their deliberations over the last, uh, year, and, uh, my understanding is they brought forward three options for a county council comment, they are, I believe, projecting adoption of one of those options, uh, next summer, which would be then, uh, put into effect July of nineteen, and, and I heard the council to the commission testify that in their view, uh, that all three of those options, uh, would, uh, move towards WSS, would move towards the PSC's direction to adopt reasonable rates, uh, and none of those require this bill.
Thank, thank you for that. Avi, quick question for you, if I may. Um, United Therapeutics has made an incredible investment into downtown Silver Spring, has been part of the renaissance of Silver Spring and, uh, and Montgomery County, and I guess what I would ask of you, um, in light of that significant investment to headquarter here in Montgomery County and to make that significant investment, this would cause, uh, harm to United Therapeutics, should we pass this legislation and should it be implemented? Would that not be correct?
Yeah, yes, in some respects, um, utilities are a major component of the manufacturing process, uh, WSSC costs are upwards of about eight hundred thousand dollars a year, just second that to Pepco's, uh, um, electric, and then third are friends of Washington Gas, are, uh, are, are, are third in the process, but it, it does add to our overall operating expenses based here.
Thank you, thank you for that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right, uh, seeing no more questions, uh, that really does conclude the testimony on this bill. And our next bill is gonna be PGMC 118, 111-18. Uh, this is WSSC Funding Accountability and Transparency Act, this is my bill, we have one, uh, person signed up to testify, that's Jerry Garson, and I'll just speak to the bill while Mr. Garson approaches the witness table. What this bill does is, uh, it would require WSSC, beginning in 2020, to maintain a public website disclosing the amount spent on vendors who receive more than twenty-five thousand dollars annually. This bill might look familiar, because we've passed similar bills in recent years, and the county council did as well. Back in, uh, two thousand and nine, or two thousand and eight, rather, the Maryland General Assembly passed a bill imposing this requirement on all Maryland state agencies. Uh, the Montgomery County government did so shortly after, we had a bill after that for Montgomery County Public Schools, and then, uh, there was another one for Prince George's County Public Schools. The idea behind the bill is, is just that improved disclosure increases accountability, and it encourages a focus on cost and appropriate spending of public funds, and I believe the Montgomery County Council voted to support the bill. So with that, I will turn it over to Jerry Garson.
My name is Jerry Garson, I'm speaking on behalf of the Montgomery County Civic Federation, which represents over a hundred and fifty thousand Montgomery County residents. We would like to ask the delegation to give a favorable report on PGMC 111-18, providing for the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission Funding Accountability and Transparency Act. This bill would permit the residents of Montgomery County or even the newspapers to determine who receives payments greater than twenty-five thousand dollars from WSSC. This increases transparency and will often, I'm a CPA by trade, and by just putting in a rule like this, it'll often make them second guess on payments that really aren't proper to be made. This is similar to what Montgomery County has, and we ask the delegation to support the bill, thank you.
Thank you, are there any questions on this bill? Delegate Cullison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is for you, is this language modeled after the other, um, entities?
Yes, this is modeled after, uh, the previous bills that we passed in the Maryland General Assembly.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, any other questions? Seeing none, that includes the hearing on that bill. And our next bill will be PGMC 105-18, Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission Indirect Customer Assistance Program. And this is requested by the chair on behalf of WSSC, we have Karen Riley from WSSC testifying in support.
Yes, um, just for the record, if you all don't see us come up for some of the legislation, we haven't taken positions on the legislation yet, they will be discussed at our December twentieth commission meeting. But this is one of our bills that we're hoping that you all will support. Two years ago, in 2015, you all passed legisla- legislation that allowed us to create the customer assistance program. Since that time, we've had about seventy-seven hundred enrollees, some of our lower-income customers, and in fiscal year 2017, we've saved them about eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in the fees associated with their water and sewer bills. As we are developing this program and looking to extend it, we did realize there is a group of customers that are being left out, those customers who are not necessarily account holders, but instead pay for their water and sewer bill via rent or HOA, um, but still meet the income requirements, and they could use a little bit of relief as well. So this legislation allows us to clarify an indirect, um, customer who meets these low, um, socioeconomic and low-income, um, requirements, and...
requirements, and allows us to craft a program that would extend some relief to them, because again, they're paying indirectly via their rent, via their HOA fees, the water and sewer charges. So, this is what this legislation does. It allows us to extend that, because right now, as it stands, the legislation, a rate payer is someone defined as being the account holder. So, you have to have a bill. You can be a renter or a property owner and still meet the income requirements. We work with OHEP, the Office of Home Energy Programs, in order to help monitor and extend this benefit. This piece of legislation would allow us to do so for those customers who may not be the account holders, but instead are paying it indirectly through their rent or HOA fees.
Thank you. Are there any questions for this witness? Seeing none, that concludes the testimony on, and the hearing on this bill. The next bill, and let me just point out that because it's an even year, this bill and other bills like it, they're gonna go through the Prince George's County delegation first before we will see them. The next bill is PGMC 103-18, a familiar bill, the Connection Pipe Emergency Replacement Loan Program. I don't believe there's anyone signed up to testify on that bill, so we will see that one if and when it comes through the Prince George's County delegation. And then we have Bill Number PGMC 101-18, WSSC Office of the Inspector General. This is requested by Delegate Kramer.
Good evening again, delegation. Ben Kramer here to introduce PGMC 101-18, which has been modeled very closely off the legislation that we passed last year, creating the office of an inspector general in the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. The goal is to do the same with WSSC, a bi-county agency that has an annual budget over $1 billion, and yet there are considerable questions about transparency with WSSC. If you recall, last year, as introduced, the bill included creating an office of inspector general for both park and planning as well as WSSC. At the inception of the introduction of the legislation, both commissions were opposed to the legislation, and then the Park and Planning Commission came back and said, "We know it's the right thing to do. We will support the effort. Just please work with us so that it makes sense." And I spent all of last session working with the Park and Planning Commission and Ed Blansett, who is Montgomery County's Inspector General, to put together and draft the language for the bill we passed last year. WSSC was amended out of the bill last year because they continued to adamantly oppose creating transparency within the commission. I was hoping that coming into this year's session, we were going to be able to find common ground between the commission and those who support the transparency and the need for an inspector general at the commission. To their credit, I think there are those within the commission that know this is the right thing to do, and there had been some initial outreach to me over the summer, indicating WSSC's interest in working with me and preparing the legislation. That lasted for a very brief time, and then there was no longer any communication with WSSC to work on the final legislation. So, I have had extensive input from, again, Ed Blansett, Montgomery County's IG, in preparing the legislation that is before you. Again, it was modeled very closely after what we did with park and planning. Because of the late hour, I will not go into the specifics of the bill unless you all have an inquiry. The only thing that I would like to do is address the need. The commissioners at WSSC have been repeatedly stating that in light of the fact they have an internal auditor, that there is no need for an inspector general. To the contrary, there is a significant need as the internal auditor does not serve the functions of an inspector general. And very briefly, I have a copy of the resolution at WSSC that created the internal auditor, and the language specifies that the commission empowers the internal auditor with what authority they have, and that the commission has the authority to change the powers of the internal auditor, as they choose to do, and grant whatever specific authority the commission chooses to give the internal auditor. Ed Blansett sent an email to the commission responding again to their claims that they do not need an IG because they have an internal auditor. Mr. Blansett, again, Montgomery County's Inspector General, laid out in his email all the fallacies about the internal auditor serving in that, as an IG. And then finally, upon my request last year, I asked WSSC for a copy of the contract for their internal auditor. What I have that was presented to me indicates that the internal auditor serves year to year, and that the commission, at its discretion, can give the internal auditor bonuses, or it can give it salary bonuses, and that the, and most importantly, the commission has the right, for any reason or no reason at all, to terminate its agreement with the internal auditor at any time without cause. So, the internal auditor is not an independent inspector general that has the authority to look for waste, fraud, and abuse, and not worry about employment. The internal auditor does not have that authority, and as we found out with the Park and Planning Commission, two internal auditors had been let go when they raised concerns about financial issues that they had come across, and that's why it was important to have an independent inspector general. It is equally, if not more so, with the WSSC, with their billion-plus-dollar budget, and their opposition to the idea of an independent inspector general begs the question, what is it that they don't want the public to see? What is it about transparency and pulling back the shades and allowing the light of day on their actions and their activities that has them so very concerned that they have yet to support this legislation? As was mentioned, I believe they will be meeting sometime late this month to take up their position on this bill, but I would ask the delegation to please, let's move forward, let's bring transparency to the WSSC, and with that, thank you very much.
Mr. Garson.
Good evening again. I think I'm gonna be your last speaker for the night, and hopefully you can all go home. Members of the Montgomery County delegation, my name is Jerry Garson. I'm speaking on behalf of the Montgomery County Civic Federation, Inc., which represents over 150,000 Montgomery County residents. I'm also a certified public accountant. The mission of the Montgomery County Civic Federation is to preserve and improve the quality of life for all current and future residents of Montgomery County, Maryland. The Montgomery County Civic Federation recommends that the Montgomery County delegation to the state legislature ask for a favorable report on PG/MC 101-18, a bill to, for the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission to create an office of inspector general. It is important for all public agencies to have some oversight. Of the, of the bill provides that an inspector general may investigate mismanagement, misconduct, fraud, waste, and abuse at the commission, and conduct an annual audit. This is very important for the public who spends over $1 billion at the agency to know what's happening. My neighborhood has been scheduled for water main improvements, but all these improvements have not occurred. Since they were mapped out for water, gas, and sewer mains, we have had numerous leaks, including one on my block last week. An inspector general could look at the reasons for the delays and the cost of not doing the work on a timely basis. We think that it's important that all public agencies have some oversight. We saw the Port of New York Authority build a World Trade Center. They claim they are exempt from the New York City fire codes. They were exempt, and we saw in September 11th, 2001, all the fire exits failed because they were not in concrete-enclosed walkways. They were just sheet rock, and agencies have to have some oversight. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for this panel? Thank you. I also had Karen signed up to testify. Did you, are you gonna testify on this bill, Karen?
No, we just, we're gonna say we don't have our issues.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. That concludes the testimony on this bill, on the hearing on this bill. Thank you very much.
All right, good night. I guess we're done till 7:00 PM on Wednesday.